Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 24th, 2021 Tinsborough School Committee Meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded, and I'll start with introductions to my left.
Robert Mullin.
Dastien Puma.
Good evening, Mike Flanagan, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Bastucci.
Jeff Bo.
Ryan McMahon.
Anthony Tenel.
Joe Messina, School Business Administrator.
I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. We'll start with the approval of meeting minutes. Can I, I'd like to seek a motion for the approval of the June 28th, 2021 Negotiations Subcommittee Executive Session Unit A Minutes, the August 17th, 2021 Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee Meeting Minutes, the August 17th, 2021 School Committee Meeting Minutes. The Executive Session Minutes not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? A post, Dastien.
That carries 7:00. Correspondence. I'd like to acknowledge the continued receipt of emails that we've received from community members with regards to the mask policies. Moving on to personnel, there are notifications of new hires. Virginia Damato, TES paraprofessional. Julie Strong, TES paraprofessional. Welcome, Virginia and Julie. All right, moving on to item number five, which is citizen time. I'd like to remind those of you that wish to speak to please state your first and last name, as well as your street address for the record. Citizens will each be allowed three minutes to share their comments in a respectful manner. And please remember, per school committee protocol, we do not answer questions. This is the time for you to share your comments. So I guess with that, we can welcome our first guest up.
There's no audio over there. And we can barely hear you. Something's talking on the line.
Well, hang on just one moment. We'll see if Derek can take a peek at that. We can welcome our first guest up.
Hi, my name is Stacy Tufan. I live at 101 Marcella. I'm really just, I'm really concerned. I understand that the masks are now mandated per the state, and you guys kind of got off scot-free, so that's great. But I called today to the elementary school to ask about the reopening plan and what the day would look like. And I understand that the kids have to wear a mask, and we'll have to just deal with that as it comes, but we were told that they would otherwise have a normal year. And what I got was not that information. They said they weren't sure if the kids would be eating in their classrooms, they weren't sure what the days would look like, and we need to stop holding our kids' education and childhood hostage. These kids have to wear a mask? Fine, they'll wear a mask. They're not resilient, they're rule followers, and they're going to just do it because you all are making them. And they need to have a childhood, they need to sit with their friends, they need to do calendar on the rug, they need to eat with their peers, they need to be able to talk, they need to be able to learn that way. We're looking at five- and six-year-olds who, this is their first year of school, this is their introduction, and this is all they're going to remember. My child is going into first grade, she should be going into second. She has never had a normal year of school. I didn't like the restrictions last year. I kept my kids home because I didn't want them to have a school year like that. I re-enrolled them based on the information given at the end of June. I let all summer go, I felt like it was going to be great, and now I wish I never re-enrolled them. But they're excited to go back, and I want them to have a regular day. They are children. You all were sitting in here without masks on. I saw you. I saw you. You came in without a mask. I saw you. And now we're going to demand that our kids wear them. So fine, but you need to give them a regular day. Thank you.
Let's pick our next guest.
Tarianito, 4 Constantine Drive. I always bring them. Based on the vote by the DESI board this morning, giving Commissioner O'Reilly the ability to instate, or technically reinstate, a school mask mandate, we realize that every member of the school committee sitting here right now is breathing sighs of relief. Commissioner O'Reilly absolved you of the responsibility to vote on masking for the students of Tinsborough. Unfortunately for you, he did not absolve you from having to deal with the majority of parents of Tinsborough students who believe masking should be a choice. Leading up to the meeting last week and at the meeting, you received real data in numbers from myself and several other parents. Based on the post-meeting email from Dr. Flanagan, it felt like that was not what you choose to use to guide your recommendations. I don't know how you get more follow the science than the data found in the letter you received signed by 140 residents of Tinsborough in support of masking choice. Maybe you just choose to really not follow the science here. I can tell you that the direct result of the past 18 months is that you have students that do not trust the people who are supposed to protect them. Originally, we were out of school for two weeks to flatten the curve, a curve that people need to accept will never be flat. Those two weeks extended to the remainder of the school year. Fast forward to the end of March, when TES went remote for a week, which was the result of several poor choices. I have never seen so many reactions that were classic examples of PTSD. When the information was shared with students that would only be for a week, I lost count of how many cries of, "That was what they said last time, it would only be two weeks." Fast forward again to the end of June, when parents shared with their kids that when they returned to school in December 2021, it would be business as usual. Imagine school the way it was in February of 2020. Sadly, some of these kids don't even remember what that was like. Yet again, this isn't what's happening. You should not be surprised when their distrust for the system turns into acts of civil disobedience. The wrath of an angry kid who has been lied to is only matched by the anger of parents who have had to console that child. Your job is to do what's right for the students in Tinsborough. Dr. Flanagan, we as parents have rallied our troops and given you the information you need to make the right call. Your job now is to rally your troops and bring that information to Commissioner O'Reilly. Make him see that this mandate is unnecessary, unfair, and simply fueled by the fact that no one is strong enough to stand up and say no. Actually, that's not entirely true.
30 seconds.
Payman Rounafar did vote no. As far as I'm concerned, he has more concern for the kids of this state at the moment. I want him in my corner. He has balls, he's not complacent, he doesn't care about the mob mentality, and he clearly follows the science and data. If you're going to make your decisions and choices based on feelings, you have no business sitting where you are. If none of you are prepared to use the data you have handed to fight for our kids, the students of Tinsborough, then you should get out of your seat and give it to someone that will. We, the parents, are paying attention, and at the moment, we're not impressed.
Before our next speaker speaks, I'd like to ask that anybody speaking, please use appropriate language. These meetings are public meetings, and we shouldn't be using appropriate language.
Nicole Lauren, 76, Sequoia Drive. Dr. Flanagan and the school committee members, after attending the school committee meeting last week, I was dissatisfied with the presentation discussing mask options for students next year. Clearly, you did not take any of the parents' concerns for their children wearing masks seriously. You neglected any and all data and evidence surrounding masks and COVID transmission, what your presentation was allegedly about. Since science shows masks are unnecessary in children in our community, how was mask choice not even an option in your presentation? Thank you, Mr. McMahon, for pointing that out. Apparently, there was outside influence coming down from above that you were unable to stand up to. This is so disappointing and honestly embarrassing. As last year, you were a leader in this state, and this year, it seems you were a follower. What changed? The only statistic you used in your presentation to support masking kids across the board was percent of vaccine-eligible children who receive the injection. That statistic is exactly that. It's a statistic. It is not evidence, it is not relevant data, it is not indicative of COVID transmission, and it does not support masking. It's math, not science. Besides your inability to review and include any relevant mask data in your presentation, you also miss the fact that there are many other students who have had COVID. They have the same immunity as a vaccinated person. Your entire mask option presentation was only about vaccines. They are completely separate issues with no correlation. Please tell me, because I couldn't find it in your slides, why you believe I should mask my children? I understand that you could not include any science in your presentation because none of it would have supported any of your masking options. I just want you to understand that that's called cherry picking and that yours did not go unnoticed. If you attempted to turn that presentation into a professor as a research-based project, it would surely receive a failing grade. Have any of you spent any amount of time in a kindergarten class trying to teach a five-year-old letter sounds or how to read with a mask on? Or sat in with a group of ESL students trying to learn from a masked teacher? How is there also zero consideration for your teachers in this presentation? Was the email sent out to the school district last June just to keep parents off your back so you could enjoy your summer? Was your intent to leave us again scrambling at the last minute? That email stated that masks and distancing were finished. Why are they now necessary? I couldn't find that in your presentation either. Now that we are one week away from school starting, it's your turn to scramble. If you think that this is the end of the disagreement on forcing teachers and children to wear masks without parents' consents, you are wrong. Please understand that this decision will be met with protests in every possible way. There is no place for a mask mandate in our town. Lastly, I requested a meeting with you, Dr. Flanagan, and have not heard back. When is the accountability phase? When will any of you answer questions that parents have? You conveniently don't do it here. You are public servants, and you owe us an open and honest conversation regarding how this district plans to move forward after October 4th. Our children deserve more than blank stares at the wall while their parents fight for the three minutes that they are allotted.
Thank you.
Erica Nato, 4 Constantine Drive. I sent an email this week to Dr. Flanagan and the school committee, might have been last week. I'm expecting those questions to be answered. We are now one week out from the start of school. I don't have answers to those questions, including what are the disciplinary actions for not masking? What's the remote option? What happens with quarantining in close contacts? What are the rules for close contacts? When you call the school, you seem to get different answers depending on who you talk to. I need to make a decision if my children are attending Tinsborough Public School. We are deciding if we're leaving the town of Tinsborough. We're deciding if we're homeschooling. These are things that significantly impact my children, and I need to make these decisions. And I'm one week out from school. In order to homeschool, I need to rearrange our entire lives. I don't think it's fair that these questions cannot be answered, so I expect those questions to be answered tonight. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Lizanne Tannavica, 8 Nevada Road. I have a related but separate question to bring to you all, and I understand that you can't provide me with answers today. I would like to ask that at some point, could you please provide parents additional information about the status of the playground at the elementary school? So I had heard, I didn't hear it at a public meeting, but I had heard from some other parents, that the playground is going to be removed and not replaced, that there's no plan to replace it at this time, and there's no funding to do so. So this is incredibly disappointing to me as a parent, who these kids, all of their school year has been pulled out from underneath them, and there's really not much left that brings them enjoyment in their day. When I told my daughter that I was coming here to talk to you about this, she actually asked that I make sure that you keep the benches so that she'll have someplace to sit at recess. And that's really sad, that these kids are even thinking about that. So I don't know if that's valid or not, but I would really like information about the status of the playground. I also heard at last night's Board of Selectmen meeting that our Assistant Town Administrator has $350,000 left in CARES funding, and that additionally, the tri-board will meet to decide how they will spend $1.2 million in ARPA funding. So I'm hoping, and I'm asking, that this board will get creative, sharpen their pencils, and figure out how you're going to fund replacing that playground. Thank you.
Welcome our next guest.
My name's Karen McAndrew, 11 Alpine Way. I had absolutely no intention of speaking today, but I just wanted to tell you what my eighth-grade son has said to me going back to school. He said, "Mom, I cannot breathe with my mask on. Never mind learn and concentrate and do well in school. I just can't handle it. There's no air conditioning, we cannot breathe in that middle school." And it's a sad state that I have to tell my son, "I'm sorry, dear, you have to go to school and not breathe and suck it up and suck in your own air and sweat it out until the state and the school committee says you can take your mask off and breathe." And I will not have him putting that thing on his face every day. And if he takes it down and has to breathe, if anyone tells him he cannot do that, I will be beside myself and we will be in the office, because it is not happening. He needs to breathe in order to learn. And that's all I have to say.
We can welcome our next guest.
Darren McAndrew, Alpine Way. I'm going to parrot the same thing. I think our only choice at this point right now is civil disobedience. I hate to say it. My kids, if they have any issues, are uncomfortable in any way. I am telling them to take it off, to breathe, and if they're uncomfortable, it goes away. If there's any problem with anybody, any teachers that are going to give them a hard time, I will be there. I will be there for them, and I will defend them. That's what I'm supposed to do. And that's pretty much all I have to say. And I know I'm not alone. So maybe you should block out some time for the parents that'll be at your doors if the kids are having a hard time and the teachers are giving them a hard time for taking their breaks or taking them off when they can't breathe and they're uncomfortable, because that's what's going to happen. That's it. Thank you.
We can welcome our next guest. Are there any other guests that would like to speak? All right, we can move on. We'll move on to item six, unfinished business.
Thank you, ma'am chair. We'll get right to the superintendent's update, and Dr. Flanagan brings it up. So as always, we're going to follow context and data. We're committed to providing full-time, in-person learning experience in an environment that prioritizes the health and safety of all students and staff while following guidance grounded in science and data. Last week, I delivered several data points for you to peruse. Next slide. One of the requests from County Mayor McMahon was to find out about when grade six students will be eligible for a potential vaccine. So to explain this slide, 11 students, representing 9% of the population, are eligible for vaccination before the first day of school next week, before winter break, and additional 18, or 24% of the population at that time, so it's cumulative running on the right side. 12 before February vacation, 23, you can read that, I don't have to read it to you. So 73% of our students in sixth grade will be eligible for the vaccine at some point during the school year. 31 students will not be eligible going forward. So that's a total of 118 students in sixth grade. So I just want to provide that additional information because that was requested last week. Where are we? Excuse me.
Excuse me. We'll ask you to please leave if you're going to interrupt the meeting.
I don't because it's bullshit. My kid will never get a mask on.
Please leave if you're going to interrupt the meeting.
Sorry, Dr. Flanagan. Go ahead.
It's okay, thank you. So where are we at today? DESI issued a mandate that came out that will talk a little bit about face covering policies. We'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. A couple of things that are out there. I know that there was question about quarantine and isolation. That guidance was sent home by email on Wednesday. I know that there's questions about mitigation, layered mitigation strategy, and what that can look like. That guidance was also sent home on Wednesday. As we think about remote learning, as we think about students who are quarantining and isolating, what will not happen this year is we will not have concurrent learning. Those students will access the curriculum through Google Classroom, so they'll have an opportunity to stay abreast of what's going on in the classroom. But instructionally, as we think about doing what's best for 23 kids in a classroom, we're not going to bring in concurrent learning for the one student that may be at home in quarantine. So Google Classroom would be the way a student accesses class. As always, if a student is in quarantine isolation, we are committed to following their IEP. We will make modifications and accommodations as necessary. Services will be provided. In the event that we can't provide a service because a student's home, we will certainly make up a compensatory service when that student returns. So that's the plan right there. We talked a little bit about mitigation, and one of the things that we said, the two most important mitigation strategies that we learned from DESI are masks and ventilation in schools. I commit, and we made a commitment at the last meeting, that school would be as traditional as possible moving forward. So I know that I've received several emails as has the school committee about wanting desks at six feet apart, at three feet apart. That is not going to be the case. Our kids will come back, they'll do circle time, they'll do meeting time, they will collaborate in science groups, they'll be at science tables, there'll be cooperative learning going on in the classroom. It will be as typical as possible, with the exception of wearing masks. We are addressing lunches at the elementary school. We are looking for the protection of all students to try to keep them three feet apart in the lunchroom so that they're not deemed a close contact for their own good, so we can keep them in the school. We have issues with contact tracing when they're indoors for less than 15 minutes, and they are unvaccinated. 15 minutes within three feet, those students would have to quarantine or isolate and go out of school for 10 days unless they participate in the test and stay program. So we're doing what we can to keep kids as safe as possible and as traditional setting as possible so that we can keep them in school. That is our number-one goal.
Dr. Flanagan, before we move on, I have a question about the students who will have to access the curriculum via Google Classroom.
Yep.
Maybe there will be some cases where they just don't understand the material. Will there be tutors available?
The teachers will communicate with kids right there in the classroom. Excuse me, we don't take public comments from the audience during the meeting.
Do you take questions?
We do not, no. We have visitors' comments and question time, and that's the...
Well, the question I had, I thought was just...
I'm asking you to please not disrupt the meeting, or we'll have to call a recess and empty the room. Thank you. So will there be tutors provided in some way for the kids who can access? Like if there's a question for a student?
So that would be the last option, because the classroom teacher is the primary option. The classroom teacher will communicate and work with the student through Google Classroom. That's the most efficient and effective way to educate these students, not bringing a tutor. So the teacher will be available for kids, no different than they are regularly. So we think this is, without a doubt, the best option moving forward. In terms of moving forward, we also, one of the things that we heard from the commissioner today was that there is a threshold of 80%. So if that is in fact the way that the committee's going to go, we're going to need to think about and understand what it looks like to get proof of vaccination for students and our staff so that students don't necessarily have to quarantine if they are fully vaccinated. I think one of the things that we're wrestling with right now is having some of our students back on campus who are athletes, who are already here, and we've had a couple of cases, a couple of positive cases, and they've been participating on indoor competitions and meetings and whatnot. So we're kind of trying to find out who is vaccinated and who isn't, because the contact tracing is problematic, as it was last year. I think every meeting we had last year, you heard me discuss the trials and tribulations of our school nurses with contact tracing. So as we think about going into this school year, it'd certainly be helpful to understand who is vaccinated, who's not vaccinated, both students and staff, so that we can limit the amount of contact tracing time that it consumes for our nurses. So that's another issue that we're thinking about, and we're moving forward, developing a plan on that. Test and stay, we've had some conversations about that. We are registered with DESI in terms of test and stay program. We have ordered the Bionax Now's test. I know that our nurses have begun online trainings, so we've developed the protocols for what that'll look like. As soon as we have those protocols fully developed, we'll communicate that with the community. Finally, we received a legal advisory today from Attorney Longin de Pietro's office regarding expectations and exemptions. I did not receive that till late this afternoon, I didn't have the time to vet that and go through that, but we do have a legal opinion from our attorney. Proud to say or happy to say that our school attorney is also an attorney in the firm Longin de Pietro, so is right there at the pulse of it. So we will process that, and we'll have communication about that moving forward.
Dr. Flanagan, can I just ask, as far as the test and stay is concerned, I understand that the nurses are trading on that. Do we know approximately when that will be ready to go live?
So we heard from DESI that it'll be up and running by the 30th.
Okay.
So hopefully in the first week of school. That's the plan, that's the hope. But as always, things change. You know, our goal is to have it ready for the first week of school.
All right. And as far as students, hopefully we don't have any or many quarantine or isolation students. But you know, my experience with the school system is that we work with the student and parents, depending on their personal situation, to ensure that we are providing them everything we need if they're out. So it's not always a once-out, switch-off.
No, technology's needed, support's needed. We always work individually with the families. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So again, a lot of information came out today, more information to come. I encourage parents to please read the advisory I put out on Wednesday about close contact and DESI mitigation strategies, and we're following it. We're following it. In terms of the TPS face covering policy, we had a policy in place, Policy 5.32. That is the same policy we had in place last year. Basically, what we're seeking tonight is if the committee is looking to follow DESI guidance as you have done since March of 2020, we will amend Policy 5.32 tonight and have it become effective upon Board of Elementary and Secondary Education enactment of this tomorrow, excuse me, Commissioner's enactment of it tomorrow. But the three highlights that differ from our current policy. One, it shall be the policy of the district to comply with any applicable laws and regulations, as well as any orders or mandates of DESI or the Commission of Education relative to the use of masks or face coverings. Two, exceptions to this policy under certain circumstances, such as for students with medical, behavioral, or other challenges who are unable to wear a mask, must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or local Board of Health, except in the case of emergency. And three, violation of this policy by students may also be handled in the same manner as other violations of school committee policy or student handbooks in appropriate circumstances, including but not limited to discipline consistent with Policy 5.15. Those are the three different caveats from 5.32 last year to this year. That's how the policy has evolved. If you go to the next slide. Additionally, on a phone call with our attorney this afternoon, we were advised to include the following language, that all students in all of our student handbooks, all students are required to comply with district policies relative to mask face coverings, including face coverings Policy 5.32. Students who do not comply with the district's mask policies would be considered not in a condition to attend school. As such, the building principal does an equal work with the parent guardian to develop a plan to meet the conditions to attend. Students who refuse to comply with masking policies and procedures may be subject to the full range of discipline in the discretion of the building principal. Like we do here in Tinsborough, we want to work with the families. We want to come to the best resolution. We don't want to have quote-unquote zero tolerance. We're committed to working with families to make sure that we can protect all of our students. So the committee has two actions to take tonight, to approve or the amendment to Policy 5.32, I cover the highlights here, and to, if so desired, approve and direct the adopted language, the presented language, handbook language, into all TPS handbooks effective tomorrow. And I'll answer any questions about what I presented.
Why don't we open it up for questions of the committee? If there's any. Is there going to be specific types of masks that they're supposed to wear? Like I know some of the kids like to wear the gaiters, or will there be different?
The town of Tinsborough's never taken the stand on that, nor have we. We've already kept it wide open. I think there was discussion, I know that there was discussion in September that we were going to not allow gaiters, we were not allowed mask events, and we worked with the Board of Health, and if that was not going to be a mandate at Great Alola Innovation Notre Dame, we weren't going to do it. So we just cover nose and mouth.
Dr. Flanagan?
Yes.
The latest numbers for COVID cases in the town are 19 active cases. Is that correct?
I believe it's gone up.
Do you have the latest numbers?
37.
37.
From 18 last week. That's the positive case count in the last 14 days.
Of all ages. Are there any other discussion points on the committee? With that, I'll seek a motion to approve Policy 5.32 face coverings as amended and adopt and include handbook language as presented in all TPS handbooks effective August 25th, 2021. in all TPS handbooks effective August 25, 2021.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstain? That carries 6, 1, 0.
So move on the agenda?
Yep.
Just a reminder, upcoming school committee meetings, uh, September 1st is School Building Committee. September 7th, regular school committee meetings. September 21st is our school committee workshop. And as discussed last night, September 23rd, there'll be a tri-board meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee to talk about, uh, available funding and looking at capital asset needs in the community and developing a plan for that moving forward essentially. I think we have finance as well.
Yep. All right, moving on to finance. Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Presented eight bill warrants to the committee tonight. I do have them all now approved.
In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts.
And that is it. No finance, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. The school committee discussion. Rob?
Nothing this evening, except for best of luck to everybody coming back to school next week. Hope you have a great year.
Yep. Good luck to all the teachers and students. And as you said, they're starting to try out for their sports teams. Good luck to that. Just another reminder that we have a block party this weekend. I think they're going to have fireworks on Saturday night. Isn't that ironic? Enjoy with no mask. All right. Thank you.
Almost at, thanks.
Almost at, thank you.
Almost at, thank you.
Almost at, thank you.
Almost at, thank you.
So when I process the information with the front legal advisory, I'll get, uh, communication out to the school committee for us to process that, understand that, answer any questions you have, and then we'll get that out to the community.
Great. All right. Well, with that, we have no need for executive session tonight. And, um, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 7, 0, 0. We are adjourned.